In combining the library and technology FTE into one. We also put on the list a 50% reduction to the summer work and hit all departments that use summer work. The impact there will be a reduction to summer maintenance and summer guidance availability. I would say that the summer guidance availability is going to impact drop in. So kids coming in wanting to change schedules, new students moving in may have to do registration either right at the end, like with a two-week window at the end or a two-week window at the beginning. I'm pretty certain that we'll be able to ensure that we can run boot camp with the halftime reduction of hours. So I don't think that will be jeopardized. We're going to implement a hiring cap, which means we're going to target M5, so teachers who are either with bachelors or masters within the first five years of experience. We set that as a goal. Sometimes we hit a high priority area like physics and you just have to go with the best possible candidate because sometimes the pools are shallow. But that will be our operating goal as we go into the hiring season. We're going to, we looked to eliminate delay buses. That basically means no after-school transportation beyond the regular after-school day runs. Right now, we believe the impact is about 14 students, but not a consistent 14 students. So it's kind of a, it's a non-commitment. The bus is there, you drop in, you drop off, and I believe there are two runs currently for the late bus.
There are two late buses?
Three thirty, four thirty.
And the three thirty and the four thirty address in total roughly 14 kids, but not consistently.
Are they all Essens?
Fourteen kids on each bus.
Not important.
They're all Essens.
They're all Essens. So we can go back and talk about possibilities, but this is just where we're at with the impacts. We reduced curriculum in PD, small cap, so what I was just saying in goals that most of the, most of the recommendations that are coming out of the reviews, whether it's the ELA task force, the athletics review, things of that nature, that it would probably be able to be handled in our already existing annual allocations for program investment. This is going to, you know, take us off the mark a little bit next year and limit us by $20,000. Our goal when we did the override, I want to say it was three years ago, four years ago now, was to bake into the budget annual allotments to maintenance and curriculum technology PD of $100,000 annually. So we've already started to chip away at those annual allocations. The IDEA grant reorganization has no real implication other than accounting shift. We've moved teachers off the IDEA grant and into the general fund and TAs from the general fund into the IDA grant because of how the grant handles retirement benefits. It requires you to do a set aside for teacher retirement. So you have to use your grant funds as an input to teacher retirement where you jump with TAs. So I think it allows you to maximize your grant dollars.
So that's a smart thing.
A good thing. Going back, I jumped over high school student activities cut. Tricia believes that this is just going to be a transfer to parents and students to cover more of their travel expenses for trips. Solar savings is a no impact. And Essex Green Community Grant upgrades are no impact. They're essentially utility savings from the upgrades that were done at Essex Elementary School, so we assigned those as a utilities credit. And then full-day K, I think this is probably the one that we could be proud of, which is we're increasing service to parents while decreasing the cost. I had several conversations with a group last year to get the Y program started after school in Essex, and one of their biggest concerns, and there were some folks from Memorial as well, is that the staggered start at the beginning of the year and the Wednesday release day, although originally for a great purpose, it seems to have now morphed into more of a childcare problem for families. So theoretically, this is going to help with the parent-to-child care need, but also give us some nominal savings on transportation again.
Okay, so can we talk a little bit about this because some parents asked me questions about this at PTO last week?
Yeah.
It's only happening in Essex because Manchester already has.
No, both schools.
Both schools have early releases.
Yeah, so the other hidden benefit to this is it puts both schools on an equal playing field and an equal operational mode for kindergarten.
And I know this may sound, there's a kinder swim or something on Wednesdays that people like?
Yep, Y and C. I talked to Chris Velalock, where they're going to see what they can do to create additional programming that fits with their model.
So, okay. I'm unsure as to some of the problems people have with the full day. As a working parent, it was hard for me to find somebody to watch my kid on early release days, so.
Well, I think like anything else, there's a contingent of people who it's very much a hardship for, and then there's a contingent of people that I'm sure enjoy it. I think this program will be consistent in both schools. I don't know that I can say we consistently do the home visits, that home visits are only associated with Essex going back to when we were AC certified. There are no home visits in Memorial. So there are definitely inconsistencies in the program, and this will level the playing field, and it seems to be consistent with what neighboring schools do.
Right.
But if people want to give inputs, we can always look in the future if we want to reinstate it.
I mean, in terms of, let's talk about the literacy thing that we've been talking about. Do you think that the additional time on Wednesdays helps that?
Should absolutely help that. So supply line reductions are just limiting the amount of spending people can do in certain areas. And the crossing guard is one that I think there would be a desire to have it funded. We haven't been able to find anyone to do it, and we haven't funded that position in, I think, two years. So it was just a way to put a credit into the budget.
We used to have one to cross, one thirty-three.
By.
Springs by varieties. And there's some conversation with parks, not parks, the pedestrian, the bike and pedestrian group about, I think they have an interest in possibly starting a program where they train some of our older students to do it, so I think that's part of a discussion that's going on. I think something that.
I think they're primarily thinking about that from Manchester.
I would push them to have.
No, I know, I know you pushed them back, so I'd said, you guys have to.
A model I also talked about with them, which I think may be probably, might be a better way to go just for consistency and reliability, because I feel like our kids will commit to certain parts of the year and then their activities certainly will get in the way, is that if you could set it up as part of the senior citizen tax credit program, they may have the time. Because it's kind of funky hours, you know, it's like an hour and a half in the morning, an hour and a half in the afternoon, and it may be a way for them to earn hours for tax credits if someone's inclined.
So should we talk about that in collaboration?
Probably. I had left that idea with the bike and pedestrian group that kind of wanted to run with it. And I know there's folks from Manchester and Essex on that group last week.
That's just, that's purely a Manchester.
I thought there was some Essex.
Can I ask any if Essex is any equivalent and there isn't? But I still said, hey, because when I talked with some of those folks, I said, you know, be aware of what the scope you're talking about if it's Manchester, Memorial, or Essex or middle school and high school.
So this is what we have to do.
Okay.
And I think there are still a couple of contingencies built into the initial staff reduction.
When you say reduce nurse, the reduce the nurse, does that mean you're not going to have a nurse?
Substitute line.
Right, but what, what do you do?
We looked at past years' trends.
Oh, okay, so it's just, it's not that you're not going to have a nurse, it's that you
No.
are aligning the number with what you pay.
You could have, we may be back here doing a transfer next year because it's a year where a particular nurse has, you know, an FMLA issue and they're out for an extended period of time, and we're going to run over the line. I think the preview is a good example of why we wanted to take a look, more deeper dive on this year before committing to anything for next year or taking too many things off the list. Because in any one year, any one line can have it over or coming underneath based on people. So these are just clips to lines where we saw for multiple years that there was a little bit of a room, a little bit of room to take it up. What we're taking out, it gets tighter and tighter with each of these. If you're clipping $3,000 here and $4,500 there, that means there's no more big buckets. And it means that if you have something that is really out of left field, like three move-ins mid-year, our capacity to manage that is going to go straight to reserves, which means that sets us up for commensurate cuts in the following year.
Right.
So we're definitely, it's very tight, and it's a position of tight that we haven't experienced before.
So I kind of feel like, I felt good after our collaborative meeting last time because, you know, Essex feels like, let's try to right the ship a little bit. And I think that there was some openness to talk about that on Manchester's side. So I think going into next year, we know, we know, you know, eyes wide open, we know what we're going to look at, but I think we can maybe put ourselves in a better position in the beginning of the, in the fall.
And I would offer, if either town has one-time money that they want to or would be interested in kicking to us, that's where I know there's interest in reinstating something like the late bus. That's something that you can't, I think, you wouldn't really want to ideally build something that's year-to-year, but it's something you could look at year-to-year. And you could have different funding streams and try to tackle it that way.
But there's two runs, and I'm wondering if.
Can you consolidate?
Do one, like, you know, this is your, you know, last.
Short third, you last call.
Yeah.
So Ovi's working with the bus company on this.
Okay, sorry.
I think something just to consider is that we are reducing our contract to them by $35,000. So I don't know how medable they're going to be.
Yes.
Or how they're going to price that run. He's going to do his best to work with them to see if they can come up with something for us. But how much do they try, you know, people vary at student point, how much are they going to try to make back on that one run?
Sometimes if you say, you know, what do I get for half of the service? They'll say three-quarters of the price, you know, for example, you know, because we have fixed costs, or who knows what they'll say.
Sometimes it's more important for the.
We'll have to set up some other supervision.
And then you say, like, yeah, there's going to have to be a supervision.
Well, let's see if the numbers come back, let's see if the budget finally settles out.
Okay.
Because we still have, like Ovi said, we still have unknowns for this year and we still have unknowns for next year because we're just going through transition and placement now. So we talked a little bit about reading numbers off the top.
Before you switch out the, the one thing that was suggested that didn't make the list was the elementary foreign language cut?
Nope, it's on the list.
It's on, okay.
Phase two.
But on phase one, I don't know if there's being a ding dong, there's a nurse substitute line.
What, what does that mean to?
Like, when someone looks up there, you think that we're getting, there's not going to be substitute, you know, nurses can't.
So it means there's thousands of dollars left in the line and we reduced it by a small fraction.
So they're still, you're just bringing it down, so there's still money, there's still.
Oh, there's still money.
Okay, so that's just.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the dedicated nurse sub-line that.
Okay.
Budget versus annual.
In line with what we typically spend.
Sorry, so you have to.
We have to have subs for nurses.
Yes, yes. So this is phase two.
Did anyone else have any questions on this one?
So it went from $13,000 to $10,000.
Okay.
You guys are good?
Okay.
So last week, I think we were really hopeful that we would be this week spending time on the first page and trying to prioritize when the money, when we get the final healthcare number, depending on what it is, what's the order we want to move in to put things back. And I think after reviewing FY18 and having some additional conversations with the leadership team, I don't think we're going to be able to put any of that first page back because we still have some items in flux for next year. To the question about elementary foreign language, so just very quickly, phase two was intended to address unmet needs. So phase one gave us a balanced budget, but it didn't address what the principals brought forward as their staffing needs for next year. So, you know, every year we have staffing needs that go from program enhancement and program development to just covering enrollment. And what we did was we distilled that list down to just must-haves, and they're all landing at the high school because that's where the enrollment bubble is moving to now. So we needed to find, going into phase two, funds to cover high school staffing enrollment at 2.2, a 1.0 bridge counselor, and a reading tutor. And then we're also hoping, and it's in, it's in yellow because it's still contingent on realizing some of the retirements, moving the behavioral specialist dean at the middle school to full-time. So that's on hold right now. Work that was done in phase two prior to getting the betterment of the healthcare number was Tricia and Joanne and Allison worked pretty hard to figure out how we could cover some of the staffing by some internal reorganization and moving of internal staff. So they've gotten the new hire component down to 1.2 to cover enrollment at the high school and a combination of 1.0 for bridge and academic center combination, with the tutor covering the academic center, when the, when the bridge teacher is otherwise occupied. Then we still need the reading tutor, and that's for the middle school. So we've gotten the, gotten the number down to 205 just by making some internal shifts. That allowed us to take elementary foreign language off the list. For reduction. So at this point, and this year, we think we can avoid eliminating elementary foreign language altogether. What we're not certain that we can avoid is reducing the current 1.0 position at grade six down to points, at 1.0 down to .6. So historically, we've been able to offer, sixth grade foreign language required a .6 FTE to deliver the program for the students. As the population grew, that person was utilized for other, other duties. She did an intervention block for some kids. This year, she's assisting in eighth grade with the large class sizes. So she was rolled up to a 1.0 to help manage some of the things that were popping up within the building due to the population explosion. So what we may need to do next year is reduce that 1.0 to .6 to cover the tutoring needs and reading. But that's contingent, depending on how the final numbers shake out. We're also continuing to pursue the facilities restructure, and that's a combination, like, can we combine forces with the town?
Yeah.
And realize some savings by merging with VPW in some type of way for oversight. And then what we don't have numbers on yet is capping long-term subs. So we have different types of long-term subs. We have some folks who qualify to take a year of unpaid leave for child wear, and in that case, we hire somebody for a full year. It's a one-year appointment, long-term sub, but they go on step and scale. It's not uncommon in other districts that you cap that step and scale at a B1 or an M1 based on what their degree level is. So we're proposing doing that for next year as a way to contain costs and to cap all long-term FMLA, long-term sub needs. So people go out on a 12-week maternity, a 10-week medical at 185. Sometimes we've gone to step and scale if it's a high-need area, and we may need to break protocol at some point if we need to deliver a mandated service to a student, but our goal will be to keep it at 185. So Larry is running all kinds of numbers on sub-cost for us. He's going to come up with a number for us on what that might yield for savings.
But that's, that's theoretical, not actual, right?
Well, based on what we spend every year, it's, it's got a real number attached to it. I think you can't come up with an exact number, but you can look, do a three-year look back and say, we spent X on full-year long-term subs. We anticipate these people going out next year. So we have some data we can use to pull together a good estimate.
Yeah.
So I think the good news is what looked to be some difficult levels, phase two cuts, the impact has been reduced. And I think we'll be able to cover everything with the betterment in the healthcare number. Now, that's being said, not knowing what additional needs will pop up between now and the end of the year. Do we need to add a TA? I think people are concerned about the reading numbers. We talked about that at the beginning. Are we going to need some additional tutoring to cover services for kids coming into middle school, things of that nature? So we'll keep working staffing reorganizations to try to keep everything contained within these numbers. So some good news, bad news.
So, just since I wasn't at the last meeting, I apologize if I'm, so what does that, where it says high school enrollment staffing, 1.2 now versus the 2.2, I understand what it means, but what does that look like in the building? Like, what does that mean?
The academic center teacher is a social studies teacher by training and will be going into a humanities role, and they'll be, I think she's going to hire a science teacher to cover the STEM courses. And the 0.2 is to cover a TA for academic center, and we're going to hire a bridge, and she's going to hire a bridge teacher. So she consolidated some of the programs that we offer. Consolidated academic center and bridge into one unified program because they work together.
I think that was really clever.
And they have someone who they feel is going to be a great TA match for that, so they're going to hire out the counselor, which is a component we don't have.
Will you explain the, I didn't, I didn't really understand it, the dean and swing situation in the middle school? How is that going to work out?
So right now, Kim Provost is .6 behavioral specialist dean and .4 sale.
Right, she was originally sale.
Originally sale.
Right.
So if we realize the retirements that we anticipate, one has been earmarked to fund that position. So she'll go.
Which one, the sale position?
The dean position.
Okay.
She'll go full-time into the dean position and will hire straight out for the.
A .6.
A 1.0 for sale.
Okay.
I'm sorry to make you do this, but a parent emailed me about the merging at Essex Elementary of the .4 and .4.
Yeah.
So I wondered if you could just speak to that. What I, what my understanding is that you've got a librarian with 1.4 FaceTime with kids and a media specialist with .4 FaceTime with kids, we're merging that, the two, and then we're supplementing any hardware, software concerns with folks from Memorial or here.
In that work.
Yep.
And so that, to me, seems like logical thing. But I think one of the things that I talked to you about was, we're going to be talking in the future about media specialists, librarians, computer, science, and kind of how that's going to be changing or evolving in the district in the next few years. And Julie's going to talk to us about that.
Computational science should be coming in, which is computer science, should be coming through the math strand and not segregated out into a computer class. So right now, at the elementary, they cover everything from basic introduction to, which, when you talk about cyclical analysis of your curriculum, we probably need to look at the curriculum because the kids are probably coming in with a lot more skills than, you know, and I know Jenna and Jeff do a great job of updating on the fly, but I think sometimes we're the victim of great long-term people because they hold so much of the knowledge within, within their heads, even their brains, their institutional knowledge. So I think, you know, what we're looking at is introduction to computers, some keyboarding, internet safety at the younger levels, and then it does stop to move into some coding programs. And I think Jenna can be a great help, Del can be a great help there. And I think what the goal is, is to platoon the situation and use the best possible people to teach the components that we taught. So I think stay tuned for that because we're going to really enlist their help in how we can best put this together to deliver the program that we want. And I do think it's another great opportunity to start to look at building consistency in the delivery of program between schools. Because when you look at, I mean, if you just look at the numbers and you take the people out of it, when Memorial School was close to, I mean, they were getting close to 500 students at one point, the librarian needed five, six sections. We had to add PE to make sure the kids had their full program. Essex is always run at about two sections per grade level. They peaked at one year to go to one bubble class of three. So there's always been some discrepancy in how much actual teacher-to-student time there is and then time to build the program. So I do think we've benefited from the fact that people have had time to build additional programming, but in a situation like this, I think we have to make sure we're fulfilling the obligation of student contact time and student program, and then how can we use other resources to deliver the expansion parts of the program? I don't know if that makes sense to you. Anything else? So I think in a nutshell, tight exiting this year means tight starting next year, and I would hesitate to make any recommendations during the statement at this point unless we get some outside funding for something like the buses.
So can we revisit this? Like, when is a good time to think about revisiting this? When we do, at the end of the year, when we do the?
We could, I would say we should give you periodic updates. So maybe say we don't do a full-blown.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll have a lot more at our next meeting.
Will Larry have this update?
Which update?
The, the two, you know.
Oh, that?
Yeah.
That is actually getting pretty close.
Is that getting close?
Yeah, that is.
Maybe the second April meeting, the first April meeting is right before town meeting? If we have it, we'll put it on the agenda, Bud.
Okay. We're going to get more inputs, but what we won't know is like the whole picture. I think it's kind of the point of the first summary. So yes, a lot of different things we'll start to know and happy to share those, that information as everything comes to us.
When will we have a signed agreement on healthcare?
Well, open enrollment is the 15th of April, typically just before that.
So I think April 24th will be our next big.
Okay. That makes sense.
All right. Okay, so school choice. Pretty straightforward picture this year.
So you weren't here last week, Caroline, for this, Bud.
Aren't you also lucky?
Yeah.
So I don't think my thinking has changed all that much from last week. So the color graph at the back of your packet just shows you the distribution. We have 120-plus applicants. And just to clarify, what they're applying for is to have their name thrown into a literal hat or box and then drawn out. So school choice is a lottery, it's blind lottery. The application they fill out is simply name, address, do you have a sibling here currently, and what grade are you looking to enter? The distribution is fairly, you know, it usually breaks out in transition year, so you see K is high and nine is high. My thinking is still that we look to do two kids per grade, two students per grade level, K5.
But we don't have anyone in the second grade.
So we would not have anyone in the second grade.
So that means, we have to place how many?
So that's why I would also consider waiting until late spring to see how movement shakes out between sixth and ninth grade, to see if we could put one student in each of those grade levels.
So you're really considering putting kids in ninth grade?
Quite possibly.
One?
One.
One, no.
And I wouldn't do that until we know the ebb and flow. So you'll have students applying out to private school, you'll have students returning from private school, you'll have students going to the tech, and then you'll have natural people making, you know, physical moves, moving in and out of town. So if, if we can hit the number that we anticipate and not go over what's scheduled for, I think you could add one student there. Otherwise, I would have to identify one of the lowest grade levels and go for three students, so maybe two at Essex, one at Memorial. That's if we hold tight to meeting our projection for 12.
I'm worried about putting anyone at Memorial, given building a new school. So if we said two, K, one, three, four, five, so that's one, two, three, five, that's 10, and then you're saying hold off on the other two until later in the spring.
What's wrong with doing two more at kindergarten level?
You're saying four at the kindergarten level?
Yeah.
Because then you're pushing Essex up. Because then you're pushing Essex up to benchmark.
Yeah, okay.
You're losing... And I think we have to be really careful at Essex because it is so small. If you put 10 new kids in that school, that's...
That's gonna have an impact.
That's gonna impact them. And again, you know, with all respect, and once there are students, there are students, we also just don't know. We don't know who will be coming in, just like you don't know when someone moves into town. But what we're doing is we're basically contracting for the academic life of a student for $5,000. So I think-
A year.
A year. So we have to make sure that... I think we need to be careful that we don't... Knowing our budget is so limited, we're not gonna have the capacity to add teachers if we take too many students in one location and then have a move-in situation.
What about that?
I know everyone's talking one for 9th grade. Obviously, I'm selfish in speaking. It's the highest grade in the district.
Yeah.
I know personally, I have six kids who are coming back into the district. They were all at the, what do you call it, the high school move-up day. So I just don't know. And if we have people who move in over the summer, if you wait until spring and you still... But to me, that should be like off limits.
So here's a question, and I don't know if you can... You already have the cutoff date for applications?
Mm-hmm.
But can you just have a special thing for 2nd grade? Because we don't have anyone that's applying.
We could. If we wanted to just... If... I say we monitor it and wait until post-April vacation, to be honest with you. And see what we're getting for... See where kindergarten settles out and just see what we're... What people are projecting in 6th and 9th grade at that point.
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying. 9th grade is not where I want to place anyone. If we're trying to make the 12, again, my concern is that we are eliminating options at Memorial because we've already cut a classroom section there. We have no capacity to add a teacher. So the one positive thing about the high school is they have the broadest schedule and the most options to distribute students, which sounds very clinical. But you can't... One student isn't going to tip the apple cart at the high school where one student could completely tip the apple cart at Memorial School.
So do you want us to vote on this tonight?
It's really just sharing my thinking and not making a form.
What about, just play devil's advocate, what if you take one in 12th grade?
I would never recommend a non... Once you get past 6th grade, I would never recommend a non-transition year move because what you're doing is you're going to be pulling someone in who is looking to make a geographical change in their senior year. So there's probably a lot... You can assume that there may be some issues behind that.
Yeah, that's kind of what I figured.
So I think we just... We wanna be careful and take people at natural transition points, which is why I look at 6th or 9th. And I think at the elementary level, I think what we've also seen, and this is anecdotal, but at the 9th grade, you get a lot of interest. And then when the offer goes out, there hasn't always been a conversation with the student from the parent. So you get folks who are interested as the parents to have them here, but then it doesn't execute at the family level.
Right.
So we tend not... We tend to go through a wait list for 9th graders. At least it has been so in the past. I think at the elementary level, if you're making a choice at the 3rd grade level to move your student, I think the adult, for the most part, still owns the choice. So it doesn't seem to fall apart. So they're just more reliable to go off-grade at the elementary school. And I think it's important. The rigor here is high in getting... I'm a firm believer, and you've talked to some of the admin team. We all have slightly different positions on this. But getting kids in early and having them become part of the system and accustomed to the expectations and part of the K-12 curriculum, I think positions them for more success in the elementary.
I hear what you're saying. But I think there's also a trend of people who might have left the district in elementary school at the middle school level because of the level. And are... Those kids are choosing to come back. So they already know the culture and are wanting to come back here.
We can take 9th grade off.
And I know, it's one kid, and I get it. But we all talk... We've talked about the models are all broken. We need to come to some fix for it with the towns. But we can't... I don't want to create what we've created for the... What are they now? The 7th, 8th, or the 7th, 8th, and 9th grade? Or 8th, 9th, and 10th grade with the new building that we're building? So I just don't want to create that whole new trend again by relying on building, bringing in choice kids. I know we have to because it's money, but this isn't gonna be a long-term fix.
True.
So... Well, I mean, the reality is $5,000 a kid is really just pitiful. It is pitiful. But at what cost? So you're building classes that are just way too large. So those kids aren't having the same experience as other kids that come to the school. But I think if you look at where she's putting them, in Essex, where you have your below guidelines.
I'm just gonna make my point.
I just have to make just another point anecdotally. This weekend involved in a robotics meet. And I hadn't realized that probably half a month is on the theme of school choice student district. And the families and the students are very engaged, very involved, and really good. So I just, I'm like, hmm, that perspective, I hadn't realized.
Puts a phase on it.
Yeah, it puts a phase... It put a phase on it for me. That they were engaged and involved, and it wasn't in any way, oh, you're Essex, you're Manchester, you're Beverly, you're Gloucester, you're... So just on the ground, I was gonna say, I think that part is working well.
Yeah.
And I think what's happening is we're having a hard time realizing our exit number every year. So we're not replacing at the same rate that students are moving out. But we're trying to hold that placeholder in the budget steady and not lose revenue from it.
When you say moving out, you mean graduating?
Yes.
Graduating out.
Like, we have 12 graduating this year. So we're trying to replace those 12 within the system.
Relatively speaking, that's a $60,000 amount of the budget, which is a fraction of the Phase 1 or Phase 2.
So do you... So do you want us to wait?
I wanted your feedback. Clearly, 9th grade is on everybody's list as the place of last resort. I think we could probably go with 10 at the elementary level. And if we felt we needed to try to push to the 2 because the numbers are tightening, we can look at doing another call or seeing where we could put...
I feel like go with 10 and then like gradually just not.
Yeah. So can I have a motion? I wanna ask for that.
Need a motion?
Yeah, a motion for Pam to...
You want to replace 10?
Replace 10 students... Do we want to be specific about the elementary?
You're not supposed to be specific.
Okay, so replace 10 students for school choice. And you're making that motion?
Is that enough? I'll make that motion to Pam.
And who's second?
I do. I second that.
So that was Morin and Erdman? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Great. Thank you. Thanks, Kim.
You're welcome.
Okay. And then the school calendar.
School calendar is just revised based on your recommendation from last time. So it's just there for you to take a peek at. If you have any last-minute suggestions, after we get through tomorrow, Thursday, I'll release, hopefully, the last day of school and the first days of school for next year, send a calendar up to Mita for them to take a look at. They've been actively involved in putting it together up to this point.
Kim, I went through this, and I had a bunch of questions. Some of these dates didn't line up. On the November conferences?
Yep.
Is it the 6th and 7th or the 5th, 5th and 6th? Because in the box, it says one thing, and on the grid, it says another. Or at least on the copy we looked at last time. Did that get reconciled?
No, it did.
I was looking at the last calendar.
Blue?
Yeah, the blue is different from the grid. November...
November 6th. So it doesn't have the 5 in there.
Okay.
Yeah, do you see it says November 7, K through 8 in the box, but then blue is highlighted?
Right. So what we decided, we missed that in the box. So what we decided last time was we were going to give...
The 6.
The 6 is gonna be the traditional election day, full-day conferences. But we're going to move the half-day not to the Wednesday, but to the Monday. And that puts decision-making in the parents' hands in terms of how they want to manage. But it gives you three continuous days for the remainder of the week.
So you just need to take that out of the box?
Yeah, we have to change it.
The November 7.
What else did you have?
And then the same thing, January PD. Is it the 18th or the 22nd? Because the box says one thing, the grid says another.
My box says nothing.
January dot-dot, so it should be 18, yeah?
Yeah, we had two, I think, last time, and the box didn't update it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And then, got some more of these. The May half-days, 1st or 2nd, or 29th or 30th? Again, Fox doesn't gel with the...
We did...
Corrected the calendars.
Yes, correct.
It is, okay. Let's see, June, K through 8, trimester ends, 5th or 7th?
5th or 6th in this case. It's listed as 5th and shown on the calendar as 6th.
Which box and which date?
The orange color.
Why don't we take it back and look at it?
We'll send it back.
June 5th, okay.
Yeah, I think that's the last one I had.
Yeah, so is that 5th, 6th, or 7th?
You have to run this by Mita, right? We're not voting on this for a final.
You're voting on basic... We have edits to do. So you know what? 25 people have a focus, I'm not kidding. And we assign it to the people who always find something. So we get to go back and...
Linda Collins is always a good person to do something like this.
I don't know what their intent... On the 5th, I'm sure the intent was the 7th, but they colored the wrong box. So we will get all of those edits cleaned up. What we really need to all agree on is not the editing piece of it, but the beginning days, the end days, and the general placement of the half-days, which is what we talked about last time. And we want to... And your feedback on how that PD date falls in January, whether Friday or the Monday was optimal to attach to the long weekend and everyone agree Friday.
Yeah.
It still makes me crazy that we have a holiday after the first two days of school.
In January?
No, when the school starts.
Weekend. Yeah, like that Friday.
I kind of like that because you go for a few days and you kind of settle in, and then you get to be finally done.
If you've ever done it, it really works well.
Yeah.
You know what's making me crazy is the half-day, the half-day on Monday in November. I feel like nobody's gonna come to school. If there's a half-day on Monday and no school on Tuesday.
It's just, it's just... The one thing that works well is it's just elementary for conferences in the afternoon. So if you're scheduled for a conference... I think what we were trying to facilitate, and what we talked about last time, was if you're working, well, you can take a half... You can work a morning, take a half-day and a full-day in a row. If you put the half-day on the Wednesday, you take the full day. You work the next morning, and you take the next afternoon. So I think that's definitely one of those. It will please some, it will annoy others, and we'll take some feedback and see if we need to change it up next year or maybe something in our discussions with the contract will yield a whole different system altogether.
Yeah.
So...
But we don't have it listed on the half-day. November 7.
Nope, we'll put it in the box.
Yeah.
As an aside, there has to be a calendar program that like populates itself by choices you make on a calendar instead of having humans have to do these boxes.
If you can find it, send it to me.
And then we need a date for the report cards sent home for June?
We always leave that open-ended because it goes the last day.
Yeah.
I think the one thing about the beginning of the year, even though it's kind of funky... The way our schedule does not have a lot of days off for kids during the year, even though it feels to us like it does. Because if you are watching or reading in the articles in the Globe, I've got colleagues in districts, and they're already up to the 28th and the 29th going in. To this week. So we're in a pretty good shape because we start early. And having the kids in those two days before is pretty good for orientation and getting them squared away and into introducing all of the established routines. Then they kind of hit the ground running with academics when they get back. So it does... It works well.
So we just need to add some half-days.
Yeah, well, there's some more editing in the box. So if you saw anything, just circle it and hand it off to me on the way out.
Okay, and we're gonna finalize this at some point in the next couple weeks. And then I just want to circle back on Julie. Julie is coming to CS1.
I have to pull up my calendar.
Okay. There are things that... There's the district improvement plan, which is one of them.
That's a team thing at the end of the year.
But I'd love to have her-
She's coming for STEM.
Okay.
And she's coming for kind of humanities, but more of a focus on ELA. And I just have to look at the dates that I plugged her in. Sorry.
And I also would love to hear about that computational thinking thing.
We'll have some more information on the Creative Education Foundation and that partnership.
Yes.
And some updates on the summer literacy that's gonna be running.
All right. All right, good. Anything else, guys?
I just want to say one thing, since we're on the state report. Just an order of some fabulous things our kids are doing. We had districts this past weekend for chorus band. And they missed a rehearsal because of a snow day. So in a matter of, I think, one full day and then the half-day rehearsal, it was pretty awesome. And we sent 12 kids total, two 7th graders, and I think like six 8th graders. It was absolutely a beautiful concert. We're doing a wonderful thing in our music program. And those teachers really do get... They put a lot of extra time to get the kids ready to go do this, so thank you to them.
They're really gung-
And we sent the most out of most districts. We had the most kids. I don't know about the band, but just the chorus-wise, so pretty impressive.
And they are really gung-ho. I think they've kind of come forward with a district-wide arts concept that they want to share with Julie, that they're trying, that they're looping me into. And if... They're doing their summer camp this year. They're running a music camp for the first time. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of positive work.
So also, thank you for sending this list of kind of accomplishments. I think it was really nice to see that. And thank you for the tweets and other stuff that just highlighted.
One of my friends went to the art show at Tufts. This is one of their children from here who won the photography award. And they said it was a wonderful, lovely event. Great art. Kids represented.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I can list off everybody on that student awards list, but from marketing in the DECA program to the arts awards, to journalism, to debate, there's something for everybody on there.
And the march thing was great.
The march thing was great.
That was great.
And it went smoothly and...
So this is like the gratitude.
They raised, for the t-shirts, the tie-dye, they raised $1,073. So they're gonna be donated to the victims for hospital bills, so...
That's great.
There's a GoFundMe that got vetted by the students, so... Because there's a few fake ones out.
Was that the one with the boy who shot the child that's on the 60 Minutes?
Yeah.
Gone on him.
Yeah, no, that's... I think it's gonna go to that.
Sometimes I forget who I've said things to, but the kids were really impressive. They rolled with the punches because they got the snow day thrown in. They were doing contingency plans, and they were sending them. And, you know, I think they really handled it. I think that we were all really impressed with them and equally impressed that they did a nice job leaving it open so you could voice your opinion regardless of where it was. Because just taking a cruise through the school, there were plenty of kids who stayed in and didn't choose to participate. And they looked very content with their choice. And I don't think, you know, I can't speak to the personal level between kids and what was said, but I think there were teachers that were comfortable staying in and supporting them, and it seemed to go really well. And they were tight on time. They got out there, they ran through their agenda, and they came in very well.
I think the frigid temperatures helped. The windshield.
Just one last thing. Audi, thank you and your understudy for excellent work, you and the budget.
Hi.
It's just like you got this thing in the horizon, and it's getting closer and closer and closer. It's very exciting to see. It was not an easy year during the transition phase, so it's been great.
Make sure Larry knows how much press he got tonight.
Sure. Thank you. I will. That'll be nice to hear.
He got a lot of press for playing in the faculty game, I'll tell you that. He played in the student-faculty basketball.
Did he?
Had a good time. It's good stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, so public comment is now, if you'd like to speak, if you can identify yourselves with Gail to take your name and your town. Give me a public comment.
Hi, I'm Jen, Manigan, Manchester. One comment and two questions. Big issue, I think, on your Essex late bus problem, even one from Manchester. If you have a child in Essex, even one of those fourteen kids that is on a five-oh-four and IUP, you have to provide access. So if my kid in Manchester is doing soccer or playing in the band or debate and, and has access to extracurriculars, the same child in Essex who's on the IUP has to have that access. So if you eliminate that bus, you might have a bus of one, which is going to be even more expensive. So I don't know if it's a matter, it's, it's as easy as you think it is. I think you have to be sensitive to, you know, children who are trying to be inclusive and, and participate, and if they're cut off from that, you're going to have another OCR. So that's just a, a heads-up, I guess.
Question, I guess, from Mr. Urbex.
Hi.
Hi. Can you describe what are the costs, my daughter is an out-of-district student, but what are the costs when you bucket out-of-district? What's in there other than tuition?
So the, it depends on how you look at it, on the budget pages, they have summary and then detail, but the added district tuition is added district tuition, it's just the cost that we pay to the program, and that's it. Sometimes when we talk about the whole category, like when we do the tentative budget, we break things down into the basic level that the Department of Ed uses, and so there are other programs in there that includes our summer program, because that's technically a non-school-year program. But those are the only two. When we have transportation, as an example, that is provided along with that addition placement, that does not go into those numbers because that goes into the transportation line, which is separately identified.
So no, like related services or settlement costs or, I'm trying to think of some of the other buckets that I know of. So it's purely tuition and summer program?
Tuition to programs.
Okay, got it. And one other quick question. It sort of relates to your school choice discussion, but right now, how many students, and this is outside of the school choice program, how many students do we have admitted through private tuition increments, as we're typically kids that we admit for special ed programming? How many are currently admitted?
I believe it's, is it one currently? I don't know. Off the top of my head, I don't know the number, but it's not many.
And where's?
One at the middle school, if still.
And is that revenue reported in your out-of-district or in your school choice revenue, or how's that accounted?
That has to, state requires that any money you get in from a program with another district gets segregated with direct charges directly related to that charge against them.
So is that going near general, or where does that go?
It can't go into the general by law, it just goes into a separate segregated fund so that when the auditors review our books, they can see that money coming in with an allocated cost directly part of that program attributed to them.
And is that cost, I assume it's above those five thousand pittance that we get for a school choice child? So the commitment is a year at a time for that child?
I'm not familiar with the commitment level is, to be honest, so that's just information I don't have in my ready, I apologize.
And then the, from what I understand, the cost of that to the, the sending district that we're agreeing with is based on our cost of services to that child?
Correct.
And is that available anywhere, or how do people understand what that is?
I don't know, I mean, that, that's been in the documents, but it's certainly something we could bring to the next school committee.
From a, from a special ed parents' point of view, which is what I view the lens through, it feels like, much as you were expressing concern about having extra kids shoved into the ninth grade class, there's probably nowhere that is more sensitive than having too many high-needs kids in your kids' special ed class. So it's a very, it's a very precarious balance. And when you bring in a child maybe from out-of-district with some significant needs and place that child in your child's class, it's, when you're talking about what the, the effect can be with one kindergarten or racking the apple cart or two in the ninth graders, it is a profound effect for, for special ed students. So it's strange, I think, to the special ed parents to not have that same level of, of dialogue with the district in terms of, do we as special ed parents want more kids in our SAIL program, more kids in our ERL program? Or would we prefer, and would the teachers prefer maybe a smaller class? I know there is a financial, quite a significant financial gain for us, but it seems as though it should be at least an open discussion with special ed parents, certainly through CPAC or just in general that Allison can facilitate. Because right now, it's a surprise to special ed parents when you come expecting, your child needs a lot more one-on-one time and it's being diluted because we're accepting kids on these private.
But I don't, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, because we've debated that here. We don't have, we're not advertising or seeking paid children into the district, right? I mean, so it's not, I think there's a little bit of misconception out there.
No, it's not, it's not an advertising thing, but it's, there's, it's a completely invisible process as far as, because a, a general education parent can participate in this discussion and, and provide input saying, I don't think we want more ninth graders, or let's not add more kindergartners to Memorial because the building's crowded. Special ed parents don't have any of that. And it's, and it is so much more of a, of a profound effect on the dynamic of that classroom. You know, in a typical classroom, my child has a classroom now, it's, the ratio is three students to one teacher. It's, it's allowed her to learn to read on grade level now, that's what she needed. But, you know, it, it seems like that process happens and there's no transparency, there's no dialogue for parents to have input, and it's a, it's a significant factor. Maybe we want more kids, and there are a lot of parents I talked to in my role at CPAC where they wanted more kids that were more, if you have a very, a child with a very unique profile, it's kind of nice to have a peer maybe that has a similar profile. Or not. But it just seems like, I guess I shouldn't address it to you, it's not really financial, but it's an issue.
I hear, I hear what you're saying.
That, and a sensitivity that I think would be welcomed.
Yeah, and I just offered that it's more of an in-kind relationship where we have several students who are outplaced into other public school programs. So it's more frequently a request by another district special ed director and ask if we have room and availability in the program. And I think the one thing that stands in the way in public discussion, what I'm doing is soliciting feedback from you on your preferences for where school choice goes, but ultimately I'll have to sit down and make the placements based on how things shake out. I don't think you can have an open conversation about a student profile and program and debate that openly. But I get your point in terms of making sure those programs stay small.
Yeah, and there's certainly, I think there's certainly appropriate channels to have those conversations that are protect students' privacy and everybody's, you know, that's, that's paramount. But, I mean, we, we exchange things with Ipswitch, they have more ADL programming than we do for, for kids like that. But it just, it's something that is really never talked about, and it's, it's every bit and probably more so important for kids because it is, it's such a huge impact.
But I think it's never talked about because there are privacy laws and because there is one child in the entire district.
No, it doesn't need to be.
So I don't think it's a conversation that happens a lot because there's no frequency.
But there should be, if I'm a tax paying child, a taxpayer, and I have my child in the ERL program and there, and it's optimal for a kid that is trying to learn to read for the first time in fourth grade, as mine was, it's optimal to have fewer children in that classroom.
Absolutely, and we can say no to any district who wants to send.
But for the parents that are in these programs, whether it's SAIL or ERL or Swing or any of the other academics, there is, it's a surprise when you come in because you have absolutely no idea. You, you go in assuming, you know, you have a small classroom and dedicated resources that are going to help your child catch up. And it's just not the case because what happens is there's a, a sep, there's a back-door of, of kids.
But there's only been one child, there's no back-door.
Right now, right now.
That one child has been here for several years.
But it's, I guess it's a practice, it's a practice that should have more transparency. And it generally does in other districts, it's just that it doesn't here. And it's, it's every bit as important when, when Caroline's talking about the ninth-grade class, I'm sure there's sensitivity to that. Or people are sensitive to Memorial if you have kids coming in. There needs to be at least at some level, whether it's here at the, at your school committee discussions, have a conversation about it and be cognizant of that sensitivity.
Fair enough. Good point.
Got it, yeah. Thanks.
Question for you guys while you're here, I'm so glad to see so many special ed parents here tonight. When is the next CPAC meeting?
We have none, we are waiting, actually you came to our last one, and we've not had any feedback on the report that we gave you. We gave a fourteen-page annual report to the school committee from the CPAC in June, and we've never heard from anybody on it, so.
I don't understand what that has to do with you having a CPAC meeting. I ran into a special education parent today who was disappointed that there hadn't been any meetings to attend.
Yeah, it's, it has a lot to do with it, Sarah, because the people that came out all last year, special ed parents to come to a meeting like this and to come to a CPAC meeting, it is, you have to get not just any babysitter, it has to be a certain babysitter. Maybe it's a babysitter that can, can work with a child with seizure disorder. Or it is a significant time commitment for these parents to come out, and they did. And we made tremendous progress, and we worked very, very hard. We had, you know, triple the amount of meetings, we, we brought in the Federation, we collaborated with Rock, but we did a lot of great stuff. And we captured all of the great information that our parents gave that came out.
So you're, you haven't had a CPAC meeting because you're waiting for a response from the report you gave in June?
Because people gave up, people, people feel that it's not appreciated to spend an entire year working on things like that to communicate to you people, like I'm doing right now. And it, it, it's, it's absolutely, you, you, your lack of, of collaboration and engagement with that CPAC in terms of really wanting to, to engage and hear what was in, we spent a lot of time on that report, and it was seven people working really hard on it, plus all the parents. And we sent it in, for all of you, you have it on your emails, from, I believe it was June nineteenth. And there's never been, not even a thank you. So that's why there's no CPAC meetings, and that's why people have given up, because there, there's.
Because when I was at that meeting in the fall, it seemed like the people who were there were sort of interested in having more meetings, and there was a calendar, and so I was kind of waiting for the next meeting.
Yeah, we tried, but, but the parents that, that put their heart and soul into getting it to that point, it, it's just been heartbreaking because it is a tremendous amount of effort to, to get somebody to come watch your child with a seizure disorder or to, a lot of single parents that can't afford a babysitter, so it is.
Well, I mean, the CPAC could meet during the school day too. Like, there are a lot of ways to, I think, I think it's important to try to at least have a meeting to offer because there are new parents, there are parents who aren't involved.
You know what would be really helpful, Sarah, it would be really helpful if you would read the report and, and actually come to our meeting. That's what we expected when you came to our meeting, that perhaps you were there to, to share your input and your, your vision on, on special ed, but you really, you just came, and there was no, it was, it was the last rock.
I think that it's better to take this offline.
But I, I, but I guess that's, that does need to be said, there's, there's a lot of parents who are upset about it.
There are a number of times last year that, that CPAC was scheduled to be at these meetings and never came, so.
Yeah, because, because, Annie, because we sit forever, and we send you our information and there's no acknowledgement, and people give up, and that's where you're at, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, get you.
I have, um.
And your name and town?
I'm sorry, Maura Hughes. Well, actually, I've met with a few of you separately, and I saw you at CPAC, Sarah.
What's your town?
So my town's Manchester.
Oh, Manchester, thank you.
And so I have two questions. One is for Ann Cameron and really whoever else is involved with the community health group.
Yeah.
Have you guys started that yet?
So what's happening is that there are a couple folks who are working on gathering resources, and they're trying to put together a website. And what we're trying to do is, we've connected with somebody from Newburyport who's doing, I don't know if you know what they've got going on in Newburyport, what is the group called again?
It's the Youth Services.
It's Youth Services. Anthony Egmont, we met with her, and they do this asset kind of.
How many assets?
How many assets each family or student has. And we wanted to have her come in and talk to a small group of people and maybe do some training and then work it out from there, but.
More of an asset, not in the financial sense, but in the development.
Oh, assets, I mean, so a child has two parents at home, that's an asset. A child eats dinner with their parents every night, and that is an asset, so.
They're going to adults, they're going to community.
Right, so that each.
Tools, yeah. To assess and establish community core values.
Yeah, so we like that model, we're thinking we might want to do this, something like that, but it's, we have to keep moving with it, and we're supposed to be meeting with the bigger group at some point in the next month or so. So it's not where we want it to be, but it's.
We've made, we've, I mean, in fact, we have mates drive.
Yes, and they've been working hard.
We are trying to get more of a community buy-off with us because, I mean, it really can't just fall on the school, on the school district's shoulders. So we're truly trying to get more parents involved, the towns involved, and we have a volunteer woman here who's putting, done a lot of research to get this website, that she's going to have one place where you can go and click through and.
Right, because I expressed this.
We just met last week about that.
Right.
We just have to, yeah.
Yeah, well, I know a lot of parents, you know, they've been talking, and I mean, unfortunately, there's still not, you know, I think, a satisfying turnout. And I was one of those guilty working parents, you know, when I was working as a Boston Public School teacher. But I met with Ken, Julie and Caroline over the summer, and Ken, you were taking notes, and I gave you a great resource, you don't have to use it, but, you know, Children's Hospital in Boston, head of psychology.
The number of windows I've had to close on my computer from all this stuff in a room, where is this? Because my man's been doing that.
It's phenomenal, because to Caroline's point and Annie's point, it's not just about the school or the police, it's about the parents, it's about the students, and that resource is a quick read, it is ultra-cheap, you know, we got it off of Amazon, but it is so, it's just simple language, probably has a lot of the old-fashioned core values we all grew up with. And I just thought it was phenomenal. And you can't beat Children's Hospital, and Jean, Jean DeAngelo knows a lot of people in town, he's really.
Is that somebody who lives here?
Yes, town resident, and he's the head of psychology there. I mean, you know, he just has a great reputation, but it's a great resource. I read it, and as a parent, I thought, wow, you know, simple, common sense things, but, you know, at the quick pace we go at. And especially in an affluent area, a really good read for our parents. The other thing was, we just saw Wonder, what a great movie and a great book, and I know the Gloucester Public Schools, the O mailing.
They read it here in sixth, sixth grade, seventh, seventh, eighth grade.
Fantastic, that's another great resource. And the movie was wonderful. And it really touched on school administrators, teachers and parents and students, everyone had a role in it. So my, my next question, so please keep me in mind, because I'm not one of those whiners, and I know, and you saw me at CPAC, Sarah, I was very honest and shared a little bit of our experiences and talked as, you know, a public school educator too. So that was great to see Sarah there, that was great effort. And so I guess my second question for the night is, my husband and I, we've been trying to get our son's student records. So it's been really a frustrating process, surprisingly, you know, and I guess this sort of relates to transparency, and that's been a hot topic this year, you know, with the athletics, school budget, and it's a hot topic in every district, I'd imagine. But we have a young son right now, and, you know, just getting speech therapy, and we're trying to figure out where he's at, and we're just your typical parents trying to line up tutoring for the summer, maybe even the spring. And even though I'm a special ed teacher, I had preschool in Boston Public, we were part of the elementary, so I caught them real young and I refer students. So my son is now in the second grade and has a dynamite teacher, Sue Gould, I mean, he lucks out every year, he's had awesome teachers. But I guess I'm just, I don't even, my husband and I would keep looking at each other like, is this really happening? So he, so we went in, well, I went in yesterday, and I said, could I look at my child's records? Student records, and we had ordered them, and then we had to pay for them, so we had to deal with that. I guess they're supposed to be free. And then we were told we were getting our public records, so we signed off, because you don't have time to look through the huge stack. So it took me a long time because I have an eight-year-old, a five-year-old and a two-year-old, so you can imagine, there's not a lot of time to sit and go through these. So when I finally got through some of them, I said, wow, you know, there, there's a lot missing here. And then it looks like maybe some emails got redacted when it's supposed to be names, so I thought, well, maybe it's an oversight. So I went in yesterday and I saw Allison Collins, director of ed, and I said, Allison, you know, can I just look at some of the student records, you know, and some weren't even legible? And I brought in a stack to show Rosie Reed and her, and I just said, you know, I'd love to look at just this section, we're trying to get the full picture of where he's at academically, so to get that tutor and get that baseline. So Allison said, well, that room's being used where the records are kept. I think there was a meeting going on in the morning, so then. I think there was a meeting going on in the morning, so then I got an email, and she said, you'll have to make an appointment. So we made an appointment for today, eleven AM, thinking we were going to see these student records, so my husband took a little time off work, dropped our two-year-old off, and the other two are in school in town. So we came in, and then I said, well, these aren't the originals, these are copies, and some of them still aren't legible. So she said, well, you know, the central office only gets copies of student records. She said, you know, you might have to go to Memorial. So we said, well, all right. So she said, well, do you want me to call John Willis? So she did, and he was out today, she found out, so now, and she wasn't sure where they're kept, so we'll have to take another day to come and look at these student records, but I guess I'm just, you know, letting our school committee know, maybe we can implement some changes so that, you know, we have that transparency, and we're not going to make it such a frustrating slash time-consuming process, because we're not that large a district. It's not like, you know, it's in the concrete jungle, you know, trying to track these records down, and he's only in second grade, so his file's not that big, but, and the other thing, we had trouble getting his testing at our conference. So we've got, we've been allowed to make those requests in the past, and we've gotten his testing, but I thought, so then we got an email, you can come and look at the test questions, and I thought, wow, I think I need to, you know, mention this to the school committee, is this, is this the new procedure? Do we tell parents they can't look at their child's testing? I was really thrown for a loop with this whole experience. And so, you know, just as a parent, as appreciative as I am, and as much as I rave about our son's teachers, I mean, Sue Gould, come on now, Kate Hatch, Cindy McDougal, he's been so fortunate. But I just feel that, I think we do need more transparency. I think that's a step in the right direction, and hats off for the student voice, I thought that was awesome, so important, and I think it's going to bring more students and parents, maybe to your meetings, so you're not bearing this heavy load. But yeah, so I guess my question is, what's the deal with student records? This has to be a little less frustrating and a little bit easier, just to find out where your kid's at, you know? So...
I, I don't, I can't answer that question.
We comply with the student record law and the public record law.
So, so there's, I don't, can't recite it off the top of my head, but there are documents which qualify for the student record, and there are documents that qualify under the public record, I believe we received, I don't want to go into your individual case here, but frequently we will receive a student record request and, and a public record request at the same time. The public record required a broader poll, you can often pull into that other student names or other family names, so they, it does have to go through and be redacted.
Yeah.
In any case where we have a question, it gets turned over to the attorneys, whether it's the personnel record with Stoner and Chandler, or financial record with Stoner and Chandler, or the student record, depending on whether it's the special ed services or general ed, it would go to the separate attorneys for that. So I think it's an attempt, we, we attempt to comply in every way possible, there's a, as many people know, there is a complaint mechanism to the attorney general, if you feel that we're running afoul of that.
Right, we did.
So, and we, and we have fulfilled several requi, we never charge on the first request.
Okay.
For student records.
For student records.
But you did.
Again, I don't think this is the place for an individual family dispute.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's not a dispute, but do, like, who knows where the student records are kept?
Student records are kept and compiled at each grade level, but also constitute email, there are other components of them, so it could be an email exchange, it could be a letter to file, it's a copy of the report card, so as the child grows, it moves along with him or her. So right now, if your child's at Essex, the record would be at Essex.
So that's why...
And then we would have to use our network tech here to sweep the system for any...
Sure.
Just where you already gathered them, I just figured the school would have had a copy, too, on hand.
Sounds like you're reading...
Well, we don't compile, I mean, again, I don't think this is the place to go into this, but we don't take every email that's ever sent, or any electronic correspondence ever sent between people and put it in a master file. That all has to be pulled.
Right. So, or do you support testing being withheld?
I have to look at that, I know there's some provision within the student record to release results, but not have to release the actual tests themselves, so I'm not the attorney here, and I don't have the legislation in front of me, so I know there's a series of exemptions within public record and student record, so I will rely on our attorneys to guide us there.
Okay, thank you. Hi, do you have anything?
No, I'm set.
Hi, I'm Julie Hines, Manchester. My question statement's pretty similar to Maura's, about, you know, being charged over five hundred dollars requesting student public records, student and public records, and, you know, why, why are we being charged so much? And I've, I've received two different letters from the attorneys, which, you know, that, you're explaining that two attorneys went through and redacted, reviewed, redacted, and segregated all of my daughter's records, and at twenty-one point two hours for two attorneys, and why are we having to pay for attorneys', you know, hourly rate when it's not done by, you know, why isn't Allison Collins or her staff in reviewing, redacting, and segregating? And, you know, I did receive a lot of copies for, you know, from K through nine, there were a lot of emails from back and forth between teachers and staff, and there were a lot of emails missing that weren't all there. And, you know, I thought that just the redactions were having to do with kids, other students' names, and not between the staff and what was going on in my particular situation. So, you know, it is frustrating having to, you know, come up with, you know, over five hundred dollars to get my daughter's records in order to possibly be, you know, to get her the services that she's needed and that she hasn't been given. That's one of my questions. And the other is, why are the police not called when students are caught in the green room library smoking pot? I don't understand why it's that the police aren't called and brought in to deal with the situation with drugs in the school. That's my other concern, and what is it going to take to have a school resource officer budgeted in to keep our kids safe? And the other question, sorry, are we able to go in and review? I didn't realize we can go in and look up the records ourselves, is there like a computer with all of our emails so I can compare which emails were not produced between the staff regarding my daughter?
The office in Boston said you're allowed to go in, I talked to two different offices, the SCA.
I'm happy to seek advisement on that, I don't know that there's a provision to just review unless it exists in electronic form, compiled together, you could review that, I believe, but I don't know that it gives you blind access to the email system to do your own poll, so that, again, that, I would be calling the attorney to just...
Well, it wouldn't be redacted, which would be a problem.
Correct.
I'm Eileen Murphy from Manchester, and I'm a little bit concerned about the inconsistencies that I'm hearing, because I was not charged for my student records. So why is one, that were redacted, so why is one person being charged, you know, five hundred dollars and I'm not? I mean, that just seems like a gross injustice to the spin.
You owe her two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll, I'll split it with you. It's just, that's just something that I'd like to comment on, that just is not seen.
Three hundred and thirteen for this person.
So that just seems, yeah, it seems like there's some major inconsistencies going on that need to be, that witnessed.
Your name?
I'm sorry, Eileen Murphy from Manchester. It's Eileen with an A. She probably knows me.
But Ken, it's good you're being clear about all of this.
So, school resource officer, we've talked about. We've talked about it for a couple of years now. We've talked about it, and we're, and... So we're talking about it, and the funding is a challenge, and so I'll just, that, that's where we are with that. And I'll say, things changed over time, historically, there's been different perspectives at multiple levels as to whether or not it's appropriate for us.
Yeah.
I can't speak for the chief, but I think he is very, the chief of Manchester is very supportive of it, chief of Essex is very supportive of it, I can speak for him. We continue to raise that and include it in different planning processes, it's just a matter of, will the town support the resource, and it typically flows through the police department. We are even offered to do a three-way split, so...
And then the other question that you raised, can we just talk about, when is one charged?
I cannot speak to student discipline issues.
No, when is the...
The charge of the records.
The charge for the, oh, first record typically not, if the, never on the first, to my knowledge, so if it was your first request, then your second request, okay, same office or different offices? And I'm happy to look into that for you, that was a noteworthy...
I don't want to expect back to bill, but I don't think that it's fair that there's no consistency going on within the district.
Is there a difference between a public record and a student record? If you request a public record, that's one.
There is, and I think I brought this up last week, and I'll be incredibly frank, we've been inundated with FOIA requests of late, and we don't have a mass...
Staff available to...
Not a mass staff, or a, a large-scale process of form letters and responses, because this is a new phenomenon for us.
Yep.
So I think what we are working toward is to establish a consistent intake and outflow so that we're meeting deadlines and using the proper charge techniques. We've been reaching out to other districts who have experienced this in the past to seek counsel from them, and using both our attorneys as cross-reference of how we should best handle this. So the reality is, student privacy rights are important, there are staff privacy rights, we're, they're going to go by the guidance that the state has put out, the state has different versions of guidance, so we're, we've been in contact with the attorney, for the attorney general's office for public records. So we're trying to do this as by the book as possible, sorry if you experience something different than someone else, we will look into that and try and correct those inconsistencies, that's the best we can do at this point. But we currently have seven of them sitting on our desk, and probably, I think we talked last week, up to ten thousand dollars in legal assistance to process the ones that have come before, so...
Right.
We don't, we, we aren't getting one-offs.
No.
Just one last short...
Right, I was just going to say, the student resource officer, just, you know, one idea from one person, but we're at such a small town, it might be beneficial to all the students, everyone, sped, general ed, choice students coming in.
It has to flow through the police department and the town, and so we all have to work together on that, and we are, we talk about that, nobody's turning that resource away.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's not something that we're saying no to, and we're definitely exploring it and on it.
That's awesome, you're on it. I was just going to say, since you're on it and it's, you know, the topic, it might even be good to go out of town, so that if we have someone from the local police department saying, oh, we're, you know, we're going to cover this one up, I, I go out for drinks with those parents, you know, that sort of a thing, small town, Essex or Manchester.
Thank you.
I trust in the professionals in the police department on that one, and just even, we haven't even started, so we haven't even really started, if you don't know that path, so thank you for this.
Well, they went out of town with the chief, which I thought was great.
He's, yeah.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for all your time.
Thank you for coming, the frustration is lost.
Oh, but it's also appreciation, I need some positive points.
We love Sue Gould.
So, hey, you have to push the positives and then show the kids, working together's all, I think.
Anything else? So it's not doing anything right now, and you're not going to call anything until you talk to DPW directors, I mean, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I mean, it's not even...
It's probably two, now it's eight thirty?
It's eight twenty.
All right, twenty-four, it'll be a morning call unless...
The snow day calculator says there's only a twenty percent chance.
What's with the snow day calculator?
But there, there is a ninety-five percent chance that we won't have a snow day on Thursday.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.